It's loud, let me put some under that. Okay, I will call the regular meeting of the Everman City Council to order. It is Tuesday, May the thirteenth, twenty twenty five. The time is six oh one. If everybody please rise for a moment of silence, I'd like to have a pledge of allegiance.
According to the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, and indivisible, created in the first place, and to be used as a
Okay, so first item on the agenda is presentations. Item A, proclamation for National Police Week twenty twenty five. Proclamation declaring May eleventh, twenty twenty five to May seventeenth, twenty twenty five is National Police Week. Whereas there are more than eight hundred thousand law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including dedicated members of the Everman Police Department. And whereas such the first recorded death in seventeen eighty six, more than twenty four thousand law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and been killed in the line of duty. And whereas the name of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the wall of National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington DC. And whereas the services, the service and sacrifice of all officers killed in the line of duty will be honored on May thirteenth, which was proclaimed by President John F. Kennedy in nineteen sixty two as National Police Officers Day. And whereas it is important that we recognize the loyal devotion, faithful service, and the willingness to sacrifice that all public safety officers display past and present. And whereas this week we pay tribute to the men and women who set aside fear and doubt these officers who deserve the rule of law and for our city of Everman. And therefore it be proclaimed by the City Council of the City of Everman that we proclaim May eleventh, twenty twenty five to May seventeenth, twenty twenty five as National Police Week in the City of Everman. Whereas all citizens that join us in recognizing Everman police officers and reflect on their invaluable contributions as we enjoy the peace they bring to our city. And let us vow that their service will never be taken for granted. You guys come on up. Next item, item B, proclamation for National Public Works Week twenty twenty five. Proclamation declaring in May eighteenth, twenty twenty five to May twenty fourth, twenty twenty five as National Public Works Week. Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities. And to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of Everman. And whereas these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated effort of public works professionals who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and private sector. Who are responsible for building, improving, and protecting our national transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems. Public buildings and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in the city in Everman to gain knowledge of and to maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas the year twenty twenty five marks the sixty-fifth annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association. Now therefore it be proclaimed by the City Council of the City of Everman that we proclaim May eighteenth, twenty twenty five to May twenty fourth, twenty twenty five as National Public Works Week in the City of Everman. Whereas all citizens that join us in recognizing Everman Public Works employees and reflect on their invaluable contributions to the community in which we live, work, and play.
Did I say something before you?
Yeah, please do.
So on the next one, I just wanted to highlight, the mayor and I were having a discussion about how in public safety and public works, we don't get to recognize those who actually really support both of these departments. Chief Brooks had brought up a while back, a way to try to recognize both our barricade company that we work closely with down at American Barricade and then Beards Towing. And so I'm very thankful to the mayor for recognizing in this fashion with a tow truck and traffic safety professionals day for tomorrow. I can tell you that we could not do the jobs that we do without their support and what they do day in and day out. And they are out there in the same environment, in the same danger on the freeways as our officers are each and every day. And we are extremely grateful for all their support. So thank you for doing this tonight. I'm excited for them to get this.
Okay, so this item is proclamation declaring May fourteenth as Tow Truck and Traffic Safety Professionals Day. And we have two of them, fortunately they say the same thing, so I only have to read it once, so. Okay, proclamation declaring May fourteenth, twenty twenty five as Tow Truck and Traffic Safety Professionals Day. Recognizing tow truck drivers and traffic management operators for their dedicated service to public safety and emergency response. Whereas the city of Everman and communities across our region rely on a coordinated network of professionals to ensure swift and safe response to emergencies, roadway incidents, and large-scale public safety events. And whereas tow truck operators and traffic management professionals are critical first responders who provide essential services, including vehicle recovery, traffic flow support, emergency lane clearance, and incident scene stabilization, often working in high-risk and hazardous environments. And whereas these companies are on the front lines during major traffic collisions, severe weather events, industrial accidents, and other emergencies, contributing significantly to the restoration of public safety, roadway functionality, and continuity of operations. And whereas tow truck and traffic control personnel consistently respond with professionalism, precision, and urgency, often during night hours, holidays, and dangerous conditions to support law enforcement, fire rescue, emergency management, and public works efforts. And whereas the collaboration and commitment of these teams reduce roadway fatalities, protect first responders, and ensure timely recovery and cleanup of complex incident scenes across the city and region. And whereas their behind-the-scenes contributions are indispensable to our emergency operations, special events, and crisis management systems, and deserve formal recognition for their service, sacrifice, and support of community resilience. Be it proclaimed by the City Council of the City of Everman that we proclaim May fourteenth, twenty twenty five as Tow Truck and Traffic Safety Professionals Day in the City of Everman. Whereas all citizens to work together to recognize and support this tremendous community need.
And mayor, I know we have American Barricade and Beards Towing here to receive these proclamations from you. So if you guys want to come on up.
Okay, next item, item D is the new municipal animal services mobile adoption trailer.
Yes, sir. And mayor, if it's okay with you, it's here. It's actually right outside these back doors. So if it's okay with you, if you would be willing to go into recess for about ten minutes, we can take the council and you, everybody's welcome to go out there with us and take a look at this. We're very excited. I know Ray is over the moon about it. He picked it up yesterday. This is a nineteen-foot trailer, correct? I believe carries up to twenty-two animals. Has an onboard generator, freshwater holding tank, awning. It is fully air-conditioned. If you're not aware, the municipal animal services staff has been going out and doing adoption events almost every weekend. And they're always somewhere different, and they've had a lot of success. But the logistics of making that happen has not been easy. And this is going to dramatically simplify that, make it much easier for them to go out to events, also I think attract a lot more attention to those events to really increase our adoption efforts and save more animals lives. So if it's okay with you, we have it right outside the back door, so we can go out there and take a look at it.
Okay, so the time is six fourteen. We will take a ten-minute recess. Okay, I'll call the meeting back to order. The time is six twenty-four. Citizens' comments? Do we have any? None? Next time's discussion items. Item A, Forest Hill Public Library District, upcoming summer library events.
So mayor, we have Mr. Michael Hardrick and Willie Strickland. Am I saying it right? Perfect. Here from the Forest Hill Public Library District to fill you in on what they've got going on this summer. You may have to push the mic and make sure it's green, that button on there. Once it's green, yep, there you go.
All right, good evening, everyone. I am Willie Strickland. I am the Library Service Specialist at the Forest Hill Public Library. On behalf of the Forest Hill Public Library, we want to say thank you for allowing us to come and be a part of this meeting. So I'll take a moment to kind of share some of our programming, what we have going on, special programming and. So I'll take a moment to kind of share some of our programming, what we have going on, special programming and regular programming. All right, so this one here is a really, really big one for our community. One thing that I'm big on is making sure that I'm listening to what the community needs. And so our computer skill classes, we have a partnership with Goodwill. And so this starts, actually it's tomorrow, May fourteenth to twenty-first and the twenty-eighth from twelve to one thirty P M. And basically just giving them, you know, computer literacy, basic computer skills, emailing, different things of the sort to make sure that they understand how to work computers. And we understand that technology is steady advancing, is steady moving. And so we want to make sure that we're catering to the needs of our people when it comes to the essentials of computer skills. This is a big one as well. So for me, I wear a lot of hats at the Forest Hill Libraries. I'm over our T A B, which stands for Teen Advisory Board. I meet with them every second Wednesday of the month, just kind of getting to know them, their extracurricular activities, their college goals, and things that they do in school. And so this is one of the things that they recommended in regards to their interests. A teen movie night that we'll be hosting this Saturday in our community room at the library at five P M. Just to give them a space to come together, build community, build relationship, get to know one another, and eat good food and watch a good movie. So our movie nights are very, very popular at the Forest Hill Library. So that'd be this Saturday at five P M. Going into our summer programming and events for this summer, these are some of the things that we did in the past. The picture on the right, we did a vision board party early on this year with the teens. They loved it. We do painting activities with the teens. Of course, the picture to the left is our STEM program, which I'll get into a little bit as well. So here is pretty much the context of our summer reading program going into the month of June. And so this is the Color Our World Carnival Edition. Me and our director, Michael Hardrick, wanted to come up with the concept of making it a carnival theme, vibrant, you know, energy and just a lot of colors. And so it's the seven-week interactive reading activity program designed to engage ages five plus with themed games and challenges in regards to our back-to-school celebration as well. And so we kicked this off June seventh, June second through June nineteenth. And the concept we took also is to have different tickets in regards to different gifts that they can purchase as well, kind of like the putt-putt or the alley cat. And so there'll be different prizes for the kids to be able to gain through those different tickets. And so there'll be different games set up each week for different age groups, whether it be reading challenges, whether it be certain game activities so they can earn tickets to purchase these prizes throughout the weekend. And so this is the idea that library director behind me, Michael Hardrick, had. And so I'm just partnering with him to make sure that this is a success. Now, some of our program goals, as you can see, to encourage summer reading and literacy. We know that's very important in today's society when it comes to libraries. Increase family participation at the library, promote creativity, curiosity, and community spirit, and reward consistent engagement through our fund incentives, like I mentioned. And then also, like I mentioned, earning tickets. Tickets can be redeemed for small prizes or saved for bigger prizes. And so we're definitely excited about that. So you guys be looking forward to that. Also, our storytime is very, very huge here at the Forest Hill Library. And so that's another thing that I'm over as well during our storytime, which I'll get into that a little bit. But we have a special guest, Ms. Dipsworth. She is well-known in the film and the storytime community. And so she actually started her storytime journey at the Forest Hill Library with Ms. Harvey before she passed. And so we're bringing her back June third at ten thirty A M. And so she's a very exciting and vibrant woman. And so we're looking forward to that as well with our kids. Also, going back to the teens, because we want to make sure that the teens are heard and valued. And so we have a teen cooking camp that we're starting again. This is starting June tenth through June twelfth from three thirty to five P M. We did this during our spring break week. The guy that you see in the picture and behind, Chef Stevie Ray, he does a lot of our adult programming. And he's a phenomenal chef, great cook. I've tried most of his food, and so he's never failed us. And so he'll be hosting our teen cooking camp again for our teens. They loved it. We did breakfast, we did tacos, we did fajitas, we did pancakes, and the teens loved it. But not only that, he gave them the culinary skills. He gave them sanitary preparation. And at the end of that course, we put together booklet that where they can take home the recipes to learn on their own. And also information to give their food handler's license if they decide they want to go for that path. And so, yeah, registration is required because this event fills up quick, so. Like I mentioned earlier, our STEM camp, this is one of the staples here at the library. Our STEM camp is very, very popular. We have at least twenty to twenty-five kids that normally come to our STEM programs since I've been there for the past year. This is hosted by Dr. Parker and Dr. Kay, and basically just allowing the kids to come together and learn coding and STEM through our TI eighty-three calculators and programming and solving problems, whether it be science, math, or things of the sort. And so, yeah, our STEM program is definitely very popular. This is also an event that's registered as well because it gets full very, very quick. And so we're definitely excited for our STEM program as well. This is something that I came up with. This will be in July. This is the Color Our World because that's the theme for the library's Teen Fashion Week. So I'll be partnering with one of my sisters, Nia Peters, who goes to church with me, who's in fashion. This will start Monday, July fourteenth through Thursday, July seventeenth from twelve to three. And each day will be something different. And so day one, they'll discover personal style, learn about fashion trends, and create inspirational boards. Day two, learn basic fashion designs and transform old clothes into new clothes. Day three, learn how to walk, pose, and prevent themselves confidently. And then day four, explore styling, photo shoot prep, and social media branding, because we know teens are definitely in the social media. And so we want to make sure we give them opportunity to shine. And so to put it all together, our back-to-school event is July nineteenth. And so we have a packed craft for our back-to-school event. Last year, we had over two hundred and fifty people that came out last year. And so me and Michael had the idea of incorporating our fashion show to give the teens a spotlight, a way that they're recognized and they're valued. And so this is our Color Our World Teen Fashion Week. Going back to our regular programming, our family and bilingual storytime. So our family storytime is every Tuesday at ten thirty. Our bilingual storytime is every Saturday at ten thirty. And there's another hat that I wore as well during storytime with the children. It's been amazing, man. I've had a great time. We normally have at least ten-plus families that come out to both storytimes consistently. And but I think the one that I take pride in is the bilingual storytime because it also helps me understand Hispanic culture and, you know, their lingo and their terminology, and then the songs and stuff that we choose. And so it's been fun, man, dancing and learning with the kids. So, yeah, bilingual storytime is definitely something that I take pride in. But also our regular storytime on Tuesdays. And so, yeah, I love being around the kids, man. They keep me going, keep me energized. On the right side is our T A B, like I mentioned earlier, our Teen Advisory Board. This is open to the public. And so like I mentioned earlier, we meet every second Wednesday of the month, just to kind of see where they are in school, their extracurricular activities, what they're going and do as far as like college and colleges they're pursuing in. Volunteer hours, they can come in the library and do certain things, the game volunteer hours to show that they're being a part of the library, but also their interests. Because I want to make sure that I'm listening to what the community needs, because at the end of the day, it's not about me, it's about what the community wants. And so, yeah, that's the context of our T A B board. This here, this is something we started last year. This is our podcast, Ordinary Conversations with Extraordinary People. Once again, this is Mike and Rita's idea, who came up with this last year. And so they wanted me to be the host of it, because Mike is a guy who sits in the back. And but he puts us in position to make sure that the library is moving forward. And so the context of this podcast is basically just bringing people on our show from all walks of life, whether you're a businesswoman, businessman, whether you're a city council, whether you're an entrepreneur, whether you're in fitness, whatever walk of life you're in, we're giving you the platform to share your experiences, your story, your journey through the lens of literacy and education, whatever that looks like to you. And so last week, we had, like I mentioned, Chef Stevie Ray. He was on our show last week. We literally had a whole cooking class. He brought, got the Cinco de Mayo theme with the beans and rice and tacos. It was amazing. So, yeah, we had him last week. Tomorrow, we have Ms. James, Mr. Corey James Pugh, who is also an entrepreneur as well, businesswoman, doing great things in her community. Following him, we have a guy who I met at a poetry night back in Dallas a couple of months ago. He's a rapper out of East Texas. So he'll be coming on. And then we are closing the show with the one and only city manager, Mr. Craig Spencer, who'll be on the show. Yes, yes. Who'll be on the show with us, closing the month out, man, because I want to make sure that we're partnering with our family, because Everman is family to us now. And I want to make sure that, you know, we're partnering with you guys and doing the right things. And so you can watch our podcast every Wednesday livestream to our Facebook, Twitch at twelve P M. So, yeah, that's the context of our podcast. Some more regular programming. These are things here that'll kind of get you moving. On the left side, this is our dance fitness class. This is Suhala. She teaches salsa, bachata, Afro beats, marihuana. She just, she does a lot of different things when it comes to the dance fitness world. This woman is in amazing shape. And so she comes in and does great things when it comes to dance fitness, giving you a great sweat, great cardio, to kind of get your blood pumping and help you mentally as well, because we know fitness is good for the body. And so, great class. So in order to check those dates, go to our public calendar to check those dates as well if you want to participate. Free class as well, open to the public. The lady you see on the right side is Ms. Kiki. She is over our line dancing. Our line dancing class is amazing as well. She has a lot of great songs that are popular. But same thing, you can go to our public calendar to check those dates as well for those classes. Here, this is a combined class. This is an idea that Rita Wilson, our administrative assistant, had. She wanted to make sure that both classes were partnering with one another, so we created a combined class with Ms. Suhala and Ms. Kiki. We're looking to do this every third Saturday of the month from eleven A M. to twelve thirty P M. Just allowing both classes to come together and work with one another, because I believe partnership is everything. And so, but we've been seeing the results of it, people coming from both classes. And so, once again, check our calendar for those dates. Adult Activity Day. This is geared towards our seniors ages fifty-five and up, allowing interest to come in and just, you know, build community. Like I mentioned earlier, different activities, we have different crafts, painting, storytelling. This Thursday, we'll be doing some pre-painted canvases with them, kind of allowing them just to free fall on those canvases and just, you know, bond with one another and making sure, like I mentioned earlier, we're catering to the needs of every group in our community. And so Adult Activity Day is very popular as well, and it's every third Thursday at ten A M. Some of the resources that we have here at the Forest Hill Library, and as you can see, Everman residents have access to our resources for free. And also, with that being said, within the last two years, we've accumulated over five hundred Everman residents utilizing our resources. I think that's a huge deal to make sure that we're giving them those needs and giving them those resources. And so digitally, Hoopla is one of our popular digital resources. You can check out books, ebooks, movies, different things of the sort. And I believe you can check out ten a month. Canopy is very popular as well when it comes to movies that you want to check out digitally. And for that platform, you can check out five a month. And then Overdrive and Libby is one digital library with two apps that you can use. And so our digital resources are very, very helpful. And so if we don't have a physical copy within the library, Everman or Forest Hill has the ability to come in and use these platforms to check out, you know, those items as well. Metro Share is basically in the context, a community of libraries that we're in partnership with, the Keller, North Richmond Hills, Saginaw, White Tiger, allowing us to come together and allowing our residents to check out items from their libraries. And so like I mentioned earlier, for example, Everman can use their library card from Forest Hill and check out items from these particular libraries. If we don't have it, they can use their resources as well. And then last but not least, a lot, a library of things. This is basically just recreational educational kits that they can check out through Metro Share, whether it be large games, whether it be pickleball, three D printing, different things of the sort. So this is very popular as well. And that is it for me.
Question. You keep talking, you keep talking about your calendar. Where do we access that?
Question. Oh, on our website.
On the library's website?
Yes, Forest Hill Public Library dot org.
Thank you.
I've got one comment. I know that Forest Hill is probably similar to Everman. We have a large Hispanic population. Are you looking at things in the future to maybe try to appeal to the Hispanic population?
Yes, yes. I've been talking with Michael and our administrative assistant, Rita, how we can better, you know, make sure we're catering to the Hispanic community, not just with bilingual storytime, but also some other events. We're working on for our adult programming, we did an event last year, Mock Tales of Music. It was a blend of poetry and music. But probably in the fall, we're looking to do one called Latin Nights. We have a band that we're close to called the Tejano Heat, very well-known band. We'll have them come out and put on a live show to cater, you know, to that, to that market. And so, yeah, we're definitely making sure that we're more intentional and to cater to our Hispanic community. So, yeah.
I just want to say, I was blown away when you emailed me the presentation about how many things y'all have going on. That is.
Yeah.
That is incredible. So thank y'all so much for all that you guys are doing. It's absolutely amazing. I don't think we offer our support enough to you guys, so please don't be bashful about asking. If there's anything we can do to support you guys, whether that's through marketing or volunteers, I mean, whatever we can do to try to help, we'll do anything and everything we can. We, we love the partnership. Y'all have greeted us with very open arms. You've been absolutely amazing to work with, especially you, Michael. It's been, it's been amazing working with you. And certainly appreciate all that you guys have done.
Yes, sir.
For us and our citizens. So it's great to see, it's great to hear. I'm excited to keep, keep watching it grow.
Yes, absolutely. Any other questions, comments?
No, great job.
All right, thank you.
Okay, next item. Item B is Staff Report, Semiannual Park Stream and Bulk Trash Cleanup Day.
So we had our semiannual park stream and bulk trash cleanup day this past weekend. We made sure to advertise it in advance. Did several C T Ys, flyers, Facebook events. It was originally in the newsletter. Unfortunately, the date got postponed because of weather, so the new date couldn't be published in the newsletter at the time. But overall, I think it went really well. Gilbert had a family emergency come up today, so he couldn't be here tonight. But do you know the numbers off the top of your head, Rudy, about how many loads we were hauled off? Ten dumpsters full. So I know we had lots of people bringing all kinds of things, both from, you know, inside home and then trees, rubbish, all kinds of things. So it was a great, another great event that meets two objectives here. The first objective is to try to clean up our community. The second objective is to also try to focus heavily on cleaning up our creek areas from litters and keeping our streams clean. So it was a great event. We're very pleased with it. I think Public Works, y'all did a phenomenal job. The setup was very good. It flowed very well. I think it was well organized. So y'all did a, did a good job working out there. And y'all worked longer than you were supposed to even, right? I mean, the event was supposed to go till noon, but y'all stayed longer because you still had people rolling in, I believe, right? So thank y'all for doing that and helping out. Appreciate y'all.
Any questions or comments?
I'd like to know if you could put in the budget that we could possibly get these banners that we could put out like that, still does there? As a main incentive that we, I reckon we have to be aware of the.
Yeah, we can, when we go into budget, talking about expenditures, we'll see if we can put together, we probably would just need to discuss that as a part of the budget process in the Public Works budget. And so we'll, we'll see if we can include some, some marketing funds in there for them.
Okay, next item. Item C, Staff Report, Tarrant County Commissioner, Rodrick Miles Town Hall, May fifteenth, twenty twenty-five.
All right. So I know later we're going to be talking about, or you will be talking about, the redistricting. But prior to the redistricting issue that came up, Tarrant County Commissioner, Rodrick Miles, has scheduled a town hall here at the Everman Civic Center. And I meant to pull up the flyer with the time. I'm so sorry. So I will have to do some research and get back to you with the time, but we'll, we'll make sure to put it out. I know we've put it out on Facebook and some other places too. His, his whole intent is to come by and visit with folks. He wants to hear from people in the community as a new commissioner, kind of set his priorities as he is going around. I think one of the main topics that will come up probably at this, at this meeting is he wants to hear from people regarding the current redistricting that has become a very big issue at the county level, that there's also another town hall meeting coming up for, which I'll highlight. that has become a very big issue at the county level, um, that there's also a, another town hall meeting coming up for, which I'll highlight in just a minute. So, um, just wanted to make sure you're, all of you are aware that he is planning on having a town hall here this Thursday. And let me pull up the time real quick so I can tell you and everybody else. Thursday at 5:00 PM here at the Everman Civic Center.
Okay, seeing the next item, item D, Fiscal Year 2026 Budget Planning Calendar.
Um, it is that time of year. So, um, Susan has printed this off for you. Uh, we've also sent out several calendar invites too, for some meetings. Um, just kind of wanted to review it with you real quick and find out if you had any input or if we needed to make any changes to this proposed calendar. Uh, the major meetings would be July the 8th, which would be our first budget workshop. Where we'll talk about payroll benefits, water sewer fund expenditures and special revenue expenditures. July the 11th, uh, which is a Friday, uh, starting at 1 o'clock in the afternoon, like we have done in the past. Uh, we will provide lunch starting at 12:30. That will be our big meeting where we talk about general fund expenditures and we go through all the expenditures in the general fund. August the 5th would be another key meeting where we will discuss our proposed property tax rates and revenues. August the 19th, we should have our budget book, for the most part finalized, hopefully finalized by that point and distributed to you for consideration. On August the 26th, we will have a public hearing on the tax rate and proposed budget. We will adopt the proposed budget on that night. And then on September the 9th, we will ratify the property tax increase, approve the resolution and record the vote on the tax rate ordinance. All of that sound okay? Do we need to make any changes? Because we do want to try to make sure that this accommodates your schedule as it is your budget.
I just wanted to note that August 19th, there's not a meeting, but we will make sure that the budget books are distributed. So whether that's hand-delivered or what we need to do, we will have those to you. There is not a meeting.
I think Councilwoman Grunfeld was just saying that the, the July 11th again will conflict with, with work schedule, I believe. It's good it conflicts with the work schedule? Oh. Yes, ma'am, yeah. Yes, we will meet here, most likely in this room. We'll need a little bit more space, so most likely we'll meet in this room, have lunch provided.
Yeah, la- last year there was a conflict. There was another, um, event here, but I left off the location because all of the events will be here, the Civic Center.
We'll have a little bit more room to spread out. We want to use the conference room.
Any comments or questions?
I'll provide you with all the data.
If you can't, I would, I would just encourage you to, if you want to spend some time offline, we're happy to do that too. We can spend some one-on-one time with you, um, get you copies of whatever you need and definitely get your input back on it.
Next item, item E is Creation of a Shared City Council Calendar.
Um, I know that she, uh, I don't mean to sound offensive, but I know technology is not always your favorite. Um, so we're, we're working on trying to set up a simple calendar that, um, at the next meeting, hopefully we can set up for each of you. Uh, that way you can have access to it on your phone or you can log in through Google. Um, but it'll be a shared Google calendar. That way we can get you guys a calendar that, uh, everybody has access to. Um, because I know we, we frequently kind of get asked about calendar invites here and there. So we're just going to create a shared calendar for all of you. Um, we're going to set up all of you with access to that shared calendar, so that way you have the ability to view, edit, add. Um, I ask that you don't delete, but you could delete if you needed to, um, all kinds of information on that.
Well, and I've been kind of pushing for this. Uh, I've already told Mandy, any city events, I want it sent out to all council members. So we're, something doesn't get by us, where if we can't attend, we will, so.
One thing to keep in mind is, is anytime we create a council calendar like this, just, just know that the calendar will also have to be public facing because it is a public record. So just bear that in mind. Sometimes that's why I want to work with each of you better one-on-one on setting up your account. We've had some people in the past kind of accidentally put personal information on the city calendar. So we'll, we'll, we'll need to work with you, make sure we set up with barriers there.
And this would follow the same guidelines as open records. So don't be putting any comments or anything on there that could be in violation. Okay, next item, item A is Consideration Possible Action. Item A, Resolution Number 2025-05-01, Resolution of City Council of City of Everman, Texas, expressing strong opposition to any county redistricting plan that would relocate the city of Everman from Commissioners Court, Precinct 1, affirming the city's historic relationship with Precinct 1 and providing for an immediate effective date. I would like to table this till the next meeting. Uh, we're still waiting to hear from some other cities on what avenue they're taking. So we're all kind of aligned, in alignment with each other?
Before you move the table. Once he moves the table, you can't have any discussion. So if you want to discuss it, I will discuss it now before you, before anybody makes a motion to table.
Okay.
So that way you can still discuss it if you wanted to, but then once you move the table, we've got to be brought in.
So we have to have a motion and, on this to discuss? Okay. Oh, that's right, discussion item. But anyway, that, that's my thoughts. I, I would like to table it just to, uh... She's asking why they're redistricting?
As your city manager, I have to be very careful about how I answer that because my contract requires me to be very, uh, non-political and, and non-partisan. So I will answer this the best way that I can, just in a very factual basis. Uh, the, uh, there has been a presentation from a member of the Commissioners Court for a redistricting. The county has not redistricted in a number of years. The county looked at a potential redistricting in 2021 and conducted a study. At that time, the Tarrant County Commissioners Court determined that there was no need at that moment to do a redistricting plan. The county has the authority to redistrict every 10 years. This is what we call a midterm redistricting. Because they did not redistrict in 2021, they do have the ability to redistrict now. Um, I cannot tell you that a study has been done and that there's been a big change in demographics. Typically, when we see redistricting take place, it has been, it is because there has been a dramatic change in the populations in the different districts. So therefore, they would like to redistrict it to provide balance. That's, that's the democratic way of trying to provide that balance. Um, why this is being proposed now, I, I can't answer in my position. Um, I would encourage council members, uh, uh, to attend the redistricting town hall. It is tomorrow at 6:00 PM at the Como Community Center. I would also encourage anybody from the public to attend this. The logistical concerns that I have as a city manager with the redistricting is that when you look at the proposed maps, there are several proposed maps, um, that remove almost all of the unincorporated areas of Precinct 1 and making Precinct 1 pretty much solely incorporated. What that means is that there will not be a large street department or staff to support the roads in Precinct 1 because there's not going to be any unincorporated roads. We have a very strong partnership with Precinct 1 and rely very heavily on Precinct 1 for their support in repaving and redoing our roads. Without that support, I think it will dramatically hurt us financially. Um, and it will put us in a bad position because we are not equipped with the staff or the equipment to, to come in and repave and rebuild roads. We have to rely on Precinct 1. Um, that is one of my largest concerns is how that will impact operations if we go to a precinct that no longer has a streets and roads, a heavy streets and roads department.
It would double our costs.
Yeah. Um, there are other personal, political avenues here, but again, it wouldn't be appropriate for me as your city manager to get into that because that's going to be dependent upon you and what your beliefs are personally. Um, so I will stick with, with just the facts and encourage you to attend the, the redistricting town hall.
At the same time, it allows us to see what the larger cities are going to do, uh, so we can align ourselves with them because they're going to have more power than we do, being a small city. And we did speak to a mayor of a larger city the other day, and he is furious about this. And, uh, he's supposed to send us their resolution once theirs is completed, so we can kind of compare it to ours. And that's the whole process of what, the reason for waiting.
The, the resolution. Um, the resolution that is presented to you as it is drafted currently only opposes a redistricting plan that would move Everman out of Precinct 1 into Precinct 2. Um, I believe what the mayor's alluding to is that there are cities that are considering a resolution that opposes redistricting entirely, which is truly a completely different resolution. So I think, um, once the mayor has instructed me to, to do the work to try to collect these resolutions that other cities are considering to bring back to maybe formalize a, a, a resolution that you would consider that may be more in line with what other cities are doing.
One, one city we did speak to, currently they're in one precinct. With the redistricting, they'll, the city will be divided up into three different precincts. That's a nightmare. So, uh, we just, we want to align ourselves with the powerhouses and, uh, to support them and at the same time support ourselves, so.
Um, that, you know, the county is its own entity, so they have the ability to, to choose what they want. Um, they have, they're certainly well within their authority. They're doing, they're acting within their authority. Um, now, if you personally wanted to go out and try to draw support up from other political subdivisions or state political figures, that, that, that would certainly be up to you. But, um, I don't think it would be appropriate for city staff to solicit that. I think, I think that would have to come from you as a, as a council member.
Any other questions or comments? Wait anybody wanting to make a motion?
I move we table Resolution 2025-05-01.
Second.
Most are made seconded. Any further discussion? Did you poll the council? Oh.
Yeah.
Oh, that's right. Yep. I'm not thinking. Okay, so item is tabled until next meeting. Okay, next item, item B, Resolution Number 2025-05-02, Resolution of the City Council of City of Everman, Texas, canvassing the returns and declaring the results of the general election held on May 3rd, 2025 for the purpose of reauthorizing the local sales and use tax for street maintenance and approving or rejecting proposed city charter amendments and providing an effective date. I will just, I'll entertain a motion.
I make the motion to approve Resolution Number 2025-05-02 as read.
Second.
Most are made seconded. Any discussion? Did you poll the council?
Place one.
Aye.
Place two. Place three. Place four.
Aye.
Place five.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Next item, item C, Ordinance Number 833, An Ordinance of the City of Everman, Texas, Adopting Amendments to the Home Rule Charter Provided by the Voters of the City of Everman, Texas, at an election held on May 3rd, 2025 and Providing for an Effective Date. I will entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve Ordinance Number 833 as read.
Most are made seconded. Do we have any further discussion? I would like, I know we have one member who's here on our Charter Review Committee. I'd like to thank you for your time and effort, so, uh, appreciate you doing it again, so. Oh, Steve. You snuck in on me, so.
Can you say Steve?
But I appreciate you guys stepping up and helping us, so. With that being said, would you poll the council?
Place one. Place two. Place three. Place four.
Aye.
Place five.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Next item is Executive Session. City Council convened into closed executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section 551.071, consultation with city attorney to receive legal advice regarding the petition to protect Texas taxpayers from potentially unconstitutional public contracts relative to Texas Government Accountability Association. The time is 7 o'clock and we are in executive session.
Okay, I'll call the meeting back to order. The time is seven eighteen. I will entertain a motion from executive session.
I make a motion to authorize the mayor to execute on behalf of the city a petition to protect Texas taxpayers from potentially unconstitutional contracts relative to Texas Government Accountability Association.
Second.
Motion made seconded, any further discussion? Did you poll the council?
Place one. Place two.
Aye.
Place three. Place four.
Aye.
Place five.
Aye.
Place, mayor.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Next item is city manager's report.
Um, the only thing I've got is, uh, this coming Saturday, we do, or we are hosting an event by Frost Bank. It's called the At Home Event. Um, we posted it on the City of Everman, uh, Facebook. They will be here from ten A M. to two P M. This is free to, um, everybody. They're going to have some hands-on classes here in the civic center, uh, talking about some improvement products, give some mortgage classes, D I Y. classes, talk about property values and exemptions, um, give some educational opportunities, transfer on death deeds, those kinds of things. So, it's just a great opportunity for, uh, property owners and renters to come up and get some free education. Uh, they'll be up here from ten A M. to two P M., so we're trying to push that out as best as we can. Expect the C T Y. to start going out tomorrow on this event, and it should be, should be a good opportunity for, for any of our residents. And that's all I have, yeah.
Okay, mayor's report, I don't have anything, so, I did, but I didn't write it down, so I don't know what it was. Uh, but, with that being said, it's seven twenty, and we are adjourned.